Okay, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Yes. John, so we begin with today.
I'll just start with, start to the left.
Alderman Fleming.
Oh, President.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Berthwaite. Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Bruce Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
And Alderman Ravel. And Alderman Rainey.
I'm here.
All right.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. Welcome, everybody, to the Saturday, October 26, 2019, Special City Council meeting on the Evanston City Budget for 2020. We do have quorum today, and two Aldermen, I know, couldn't make it. One, Alderman Fisk, is not feeling well, and Alderman Ravel was unable to make this meeting when it was scheduled. So, we, again, are just going to talk about the budget today. There are two parts to this meeting. The first one is going to be a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget for the city of Evanston. Pursuant to the Illinois-complied statutes in Section 1-11-15 of the city code, the Evanston City Council is conducting a public hearing today to consider the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget document. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed budget document. I hereby convene the meeting for the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget presentation open today at 9:12 a.m. Staff presented an overview of the 2020 budget on October 14, 2019. In this presentation, along with the proposed budget, is available on the city's website at thecityovevinston.org/government/budget, and you can find that there. We are now opening this to any discussion. I'm first going to start with public discussion on this matter. So, do we have anyone?
Yes.
Paul, is that?
Five people signed up.
Thank you.
Is it possible to ask a question that's not a comment?
Come on up, Elliot. Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to know, and this is of the mayor, have you made any announcement yet about public involvement in the selection of the new city manager? You had indicated that there would be citizen involvement last time for the police chief. We had a public meeting. We'd like to have at least one and maybe more, but I would just like to know if you were making any arrangements to that end. Thank you very much.
You bet. So, when we get into the budget part, where we have mayor announcements, I'll give an update on that for everybody. You bet. Okay, so we have five folks that have signed up for this public hearing to comment. So, the first one up is James Engelmann. And again, if folks can try to keep it to three minutes, we're not going to be as strict as we usually are on this because it is a public hearing, but just to give us some structure to this. So, we've got James Engelmann up first. I don't know if I see James here. I don't. So, if he shows up at the end, we'll grab James. Mike Vasilko is next, and then we've got John Cooper, and then Doreen Price. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was a few minutes late because I was stuck in traffic at Central Street with the Northwestern game traffic, already coming way before the games start. So, this is a meeting, is supposed to be a dialogue, I believe. That's what's stated on the agenda. So, I trust there's going to be back and forth today with those of us who are here, with the council, with staff, with the mayor, et cetera. Please do that. First of all, refuse to accept staff's recommendation for a 10.9% property tax increase. You have to look at reducing waste and look for efficiencies. Eliminate all of the vacant, so-called vacant staff positions. Again, you've got to look to reduce the waste and look for efficiencies. Some council members have already announced no staff cuts, and I have to ask why. Why is that? You know, get the friends of Robert Crown to contribute the $12.5 million in cash that they had advertised for three years, and that would offset a great deal of the budget problems we have in Evanston. Do not hire new employees for Robert Crown or any other positions. Move existing employees into those positions. Again, reduce waste and look for efficiencies. Budget is filled with assumptions about revenue from increased sales taxes, revenue from the new Robert Crown, that revenue which is already overshadowed by operation loss projections, and that revenue is an assumption as well. You are assuming revenue from the sale of marijuana already. We don't even have that on the books. You've moved $3.5 million into a new human services fund to improve the appearance of the budget. Another item, why do we need a library director costing us $250,000 a year, which includes benefits? We have a total debt, as I understand it, exceeding $490 million as of January 1, 2019. You have to look at how to reduce our debt, stop taxing, stop spending. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Next up, we've got John Cooper. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Good morning. So, my name is John Cooper. I'm one of the owners of a storage facility at 2020 Greenwood Street in the Second Ward, and I wanted to talk today about some of the reasons why implementing a self-storage usage tax would be a mistake. More than half of our customers are residents of Evanston or students at Northwestern. So, in essence, this tax will be another tax on the residents of Evanston. This tax may also drive your residents to consider storing in neighboring communities like Skokie and Willmette, which do not have taxes on self-storage. National data shows that the median income for households that use self-storage is $55,000. So, these are primarily, you know, middle-class, maybe even lower-middle-class families. Oftentimes, our customers are between houses. They're dealing with a death, a divorce, or a loss of a job. This tax would put additional financial strain on your residents who are already going through a difficult time and cannot afford a tax increase. A subset of our customers are commercial tenants. Self-storage serves as an incubator for small businesses in the community. Contractors store their tools here, landscapers store vehicles, and retailers store inventory. A tax on self-storage would make it more costly for our commercial tenants to do business in Evanston. A new tax on self-storage would single out self-storage businesses and their tenants for unequal treatment. Self-storage is the rental of real property. In most instances, the self-storage tenant has already paid sales tax on personal property that she is storing. Evanston does not selectively tax any other businesses or tenants that rent real property, nor does Evanston selectively tax other businesses that do not generate sales tax, such as professional services like lawyers, doctors, and accountants. Additionally, when our business and other storage businesses moved to Evanston, the city understood that it would not generate sales tax from our rentals. It would be unfair to change the rules after we have done business in the city for years. The Constitution of the State of Illinois, Article 9, Section 2, and 4, requires uniformity of both property taxes and non-property taxes. Leaving a tax against just one industry would be unconstitutional. Thank you for your service to Evanston and your consideration of this issue.
Thank you, John. All right. Next up, we've got Doreen Price. Is Doreen here? All right. Rhett?
Here, ma'am.
Okay. We'll see if she shows up before we finish this item. Ray Friedman. Ray, you're up. So, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Ray Friedman, Second Ward. First, I would like to thank those who came up with the new format for the agenda, and thank you for adding back into the agenda in the public comment section that says it is intended to foster dialogue. Did you know that? They added it back in. They shouldn't have taken it out. But anyhow, next, I wanted to thank Alderman Fisk and Alderman Wilson for their upcoming budget meeting at the library. Hope it will be a discussion with residents. And, do we have to pay for parking? Next, I wanted to give a huge thank you to Alderman Sufferton for his awesome newsletter about having Northwestern paying its fair share and saying no to expanding events for Northwestern until such agreement is reached. Next, I wanted to mention the packet schedule for the next few days and all of November. Did you know there are seven events in Evanston today, and four of them are this morning? Now, to the budget. This meeting must be a big deal, as it was posted in the Tribune. I would like to discuss first how, just a few months ago, we were $3.5 million in the red, and now we have a proposed balanced budget. Where did the extra money come from? And, in two days, we have a jam-packed city council meeting with a TIF hearing notice. What is the purpose of expanding this TIF? Is it to take out more bonds? If this is the case, I would vote no. Then also on Monday, a Tefra hearing with short notice to give out almost $8 million in bonds to a private school. Really, I would then, I would again vote no. And, I almost forgot that also on Monday, we'll have a property tax levy hearing, which is also required, and I believe should be its own separate meeting. We now have two months to finalize the new budget, and I don't know why we canceled all of August meetings and canceled last week's council meeting. We lost the city manager a month ago, but we knew it was coming for a while. Why did we have, why have we waited until now to work on a new budget? And, why are we having this meeting today when it seems like there's so many more issues to discuss after Monday's council meeting in two days? So, are we going to have one of these three-hour council budget meetings every week until we get a new budget? The end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, come on up. We'll go Karen, and then we'll go Mary. Okay? And again, this is on the proposed budget for the city of Evanston. This is our public hearing.
Good morning, and I'll make this short. Karen Talanar Demarest, I'm with Youth Job Center, and appreciate all of the work that goes into this, know that it's a super challenge to not have enough resources, and think about how they're being directed when everybody wants a piece of the pie. I want to just encourage a lot of thought around the support for the nonprofit community and the social services that exist in this community because there's a higher level of -- sorry, out of breath -- collaboration and forward movement than I've seen in the five years that I'm here, and we all know our most valuable asset is our very people in our community. So, as that conversation continues to discuss, I'd really like to think about, have you think about how much the investment is based on how critical that return is. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mary, and then we'll have Doreen Price.
Hi, Mary Rosensky. Yeah, thanks for holding these meetings, and I just had a couple of questions. I was just hoping we were going to have a discussion. As I was looking through the budget, I noticed that the Northwestern athletic tax is at $1,080, and it projected to go down to $1 million, but I had thought that they said that they bring in $1,005,000. So, I don't know what the difference is, but if we could look at that, that would be great. So, regarding the bonds, I was curious, is, if we're taking out bonds or proposing to take out bonds for Caravalli, will Caravalli be paying the debt service on those, or will that fall onto the taxpayer? And, I actually am so tired, I don't know how you guys are up here looking so good this morning. I can't remember my third thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary. And just so everybody knows, on the bond and the Caravalli and all that, that'll be on a subsequent agenda. We'll go through all the details, and we'll have our finance director answer questions as well. Doreen?
This has to do with my most passionate subject, and it's equity and justice and empowerment as a result of both of those. And, in the budget, I just want to make clear because there's a lot have been discussed, but not everyone's been part of the same discussions, and I would like to definitely call people's attention. I have Part 1, 2, and 3. Don't worry, it's submitted. And, the references are awesome. So, those of you new to affordable housing issues and things that can help the community in terms of equity and justice, I encourage you to read one or all of them. And, if you want to write me back, you can always have that available to you. So, the first one has to do with rational justifications, if I can read my thing here, in terms of what we need to do. And, there was a story, and it's a very good one, about housing codes should protect public health, not penalize low-income homeowners. Along with that is that, in terms of fees and stuff, this newsletter came with several articles in there. Highly encouraged even subscribing to them. And, in this particular article, I make the argument about the importance of housing and equity. So, without going to the number 2 and number 3, you can follow up on the other two that build the case for this, so you have time to read and try to assimilate some of the stuff I learned for over the last few years. So, in this, I make an argument. I say, with regard to housing codes, it's truly a conversation starter around major city issues that are unfolding in Evanston nationwide. Could honest appraisal and discussion expose huge weaknesses in our city's ordinances, revenue generation, and enforcement that can and should be addressed right now? Is there any more waiting justified with the alignment of recent great opportunities that have come to our city by a lot of hard work from staffers? I totally appreciate and get the fact that there's an attempt to do something new now, serious attempt and serious commitment and serious time that people have been taking that could repeat setbacks that we've experienced before and also with grant monies that didn't receive or didn't rescue the prosperous Fifth Ward very early on in all our discussions about recognizing reparations, the need for it. And, it applies to the rest of the city, too, in terms of the help that wasn't made available through whatever issues that actually go back to equity and justice. Our residents hold information and experience that records alone do not reveal, as all your hearts reveal. I see more than ever that our legal justice equity views need to be reconciled with covert and overt institutionalized racism still holding us back. And, if we are to fully realize success this time around, I attribute all of this to the hard work and efforts, to reparations efforts with Robin in Sicily and Patricia Effion, who are all included. So, I said PS, so if I can do it real quick. Note the report below and our current homeowner, public health code, and zoning process enforcement. Mike, I thought of you, but I have to send you this personally. And, still in Congress, that's still in Congress with stated equity and justice goals. I've read this to many friends, and they all agree. I guess I find friends who agree with me, but really, I have people that actually disagree with me. It's good friends. The Cook County Courts are demonstratively more concerned with revenue generation, and let's not include Evanston on that one, are more concerned with revenue generation and stereotypes and equity and justice. Just ask the residents and me personally. We, why not create a justice and equity board to facilitate ordinance review, creation, enforcement, and remediation procedures? Question mark. Two more. Compare Chief Cook's policy and my chief to chief, I owe a debt of appreciation as a resident to see the changes that were needed in the city, but not necessarily aligned with the city's policies themselves. So, the compare chiefs Cook's police policies and procedures with the city's police powers that propagate problems the police have and continue to address. They're not perfect, but they're much closer than the city is. Also, all boards need to be independent of the very influence they're asked to review. You've heard this many, many times, and I'm reiterating what the wise people ahead of me are telling you, and I have not seen anybody respond to just yet. I could be blind, or I missed it, or whatever, so correct me for sure. The proposed citizen network of protection that you heard Ms. Esther and Mr. Sutton discuss with passion and heart, that has been in the Fifth Ward for many years, far longer than some of you around here who have been engaged in civic duties, and also shows the advanced forward thinking of the Fifth Ward from the very beginning that we're just beginning to understand by active voices that I encourage you to on TV, from the TV, to participate because it began with just a couple sentences now, and now look at me now. So, the citizen equity protection does that and needs the council's support of the Fifth Ward's important, long overdue, historical, like you wouldn't believe if you know all the people involved. They are amazing. Claim for justice and oversight of police powers. The legacy of the CMP reinforces, if we do this, it walks the top for us, and what Chief Cook is trying to accomplish regarding community trust and reparations should apply to the whole city council and the whole city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Okay, that concludes the public comment, a portion of the public hearing. Is there any other discussion? We are going to go into the regular council meeting agenda, and then we'll go into a detailed discussion of the budget at that time, too. Alderman Wilson?
I realize it's a collateral point, but a number of people have mentioned it, and it's not on the agenda till Monday. Could we just at least mention that, as far as those Caravalli bonds, that the taxpayers aren't paying those? I think that's important for people to know that. Otherwise, it would seem like we're doing something completely irrational, which we're not, so.
Exactly. Exactly. The city is not going to pay the bonds for Caravalli, and on Monday, we'll have our city finance officer explain how that works. Periodically, that is done, and lots of people have questions, certainly, and rightly so, about, wait, is the city paying this? Does the city have liability on these bonds and all of that? And, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that, so we'll take that on Monday. Okay. All right. Seeing no more lights, hearing nothing further, I request a motion to adjourn this hearing. There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At 9:30 a.m., the hearing is now concluded. So, we're going to move in now to the regular agenda that we have for tonight. In terms of mayor announcements and proclamations, I have no proclamations this morning. I'll give one update on the city manager search. So, at the Rules Committee meeting, the council indicated wanting to move forward with Gov HR. They, as the executive search firm, that is on the agenda for Monday night. So, the next step in that process for the city manager is that will come before council. If council approves that, we will then have the contract in place with Gov HR. The city council will have a meeting with them. In that meeting with Gov HR, we'll lay out a framework. That framework for the search will include citizen engagement upfront, okay, to get people's perspective in what they think we should be looking for in the next city manager. That's no different than what we did with the police chief and some of the other positions here at the city. So, we will do that. The executive search firm will draft up the job description, and then we'll start the process in posting it. But, there will be public input upfront on that process, and more to come, and I'll announce that once we have a chance to meet with the executive search firm, once the council decides to move forward with that. So, that's that. City manager, any updates from you?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I spoke with you earlier about taking a point of personal privilege to just suggest a few ideas for revenue for the city. Last week, we discussed the idea of a vacant property tax. I think that's a great idea to raise revenue for residential and commercial units. I think the council should potentially look into a value-added tax for legal and consulting invoices. That's a progressive source of revenue as opposed to taxing storage units, as one of our public commentators mentioned today. We should look into progressive excise taxes. So, instead of charging a flat rate, for example, for the liquor tax, which is 6%, maybe someone, maybe if you're buying a top-shelf bottle of scotch, you should pay a bit more than someone buying a case of beer, and that could raise revenue in a progressive manner. We can look into an occupational privilege tax, a head tax for big-box retailers here in the city who are making our economic climate less competitive for small businesses here in our city. Again, and then it's a progressive source of revenue. We can look into progressive fines and progressive fine and fee structure, where we fine folks based on their income, as, again, as opposed to a flat rate that, again, disproportionately impacts low-income folks. We could look into a progressive rental registration fee, where luxury rental units pay a higher registration fee than those offering housing at or below AMI, what's affordable with AMI. We can look into stormwater drainage fees. For example, Ithaca, a city that I've discussed with Alderman Wilson, instituted a stormwater drainage tax on impervious surfaces, and this would apply to, again, mostly to big-box retailers here in Evanston. It would apply to Northwestern. It's a way to get money out of Northwestern. That is not a property tax. And, Cornell in Ithaca is now paying over $150,000 a year in stormwater drainage fees, and the average fees have gone down for residential units. We can, again, look into conservation pricing. So, if you use more water, you pay more for water. If you put more trash in the trash bin, you pay a bit more for trash. If you own, you know, more than a certain number of vehicles, you pay more for your will tax. And, lastly, we can look into making electricity or Internet a public utility. That's a much bigger idea and take a few years to implement, but, again, that is a progressive way to raise revenue here in our city. That's it.
Terrific. Thank you, City Clerk. Okay. We're now going to move on to public comment, and we set aside 45 minutes. Everybody can have up to three minutes if we have 15 or less people. Is there anyone that would like to speak at public comment? And, your comments are, it's the same body of people that's heard your comments already, so I request that they be different than what they were before. So, Ray, all right, we'll do Ray, and then we'll do Mike, and then we'll do Doreen. Okay? And again, these comments will be limited to three minutes, so the clerk will just keep track of time. Welcome again.
So, I did have a whole list of questions on budget, but my first question on budget is, I haven't heard anything said about how we cut expenses on anything. So, that would be my first suggestion, is can't we cut some expenses from somewhere? Next, I wanted to know, how much is the total bond debt? How much have we taken out in bonds? And, I understand maybe Laura's going to speak on that. And then, I understand the debt service was going to be raised by, from Crown, it was going to be raised by $660,000, I think, but then I read, no, the debt service is going to be raised by $2.5 million. So, how did it go from $660,000 to $2.5 million increase? And, it was, I think, $11 million in debt service going up to $13 million, if I remember. I don't have the exact number. So, just a couple of questions I have on the budget, and I didn't give you the mic.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Okay, Mike, come on up, and then we'll do Doreen.
Yeah, just a couple of new things. Again, just a general statement as you go through the budget is, I'm always confused as to why the answer to every problem is solved by raising taxes and spending more money. It's really quite simple to those of us who have to struggle with businesses and home budgets to stop spending when you don't have the money. That seems fairly simple. I just want to reiterate, I'd like to question again, I'd like somebody to address why we need 800 employees. I don't think that's been scrutinized. I mentioned earlier, I recently saw that the total city debt is $490 million. That's everything, as I understand it. I hope I have that number right. That's a huge amount of money for a city this size. I don't think you should count I don't think you should count on entertainment tax from Northwestern if you go through with this tax amendment next week. I really think that's a terrible idea for the citizens who live in that community. Surprised more of them aren't here this morning. But you're going to do a lot of damage, not only to the neighborhood, but all around, all down, up and down, the east and west on the Central Street corridor. You're not going to gain that much in the way of tax revenue. If you think that's some kind of a cash cow, I would suggest you look harder at that. And why is there an RFQ out there for $1.7 million to transfer management of the city parking garages to an outside firm? Don't we have staff that can do that? We have yet to see, and it's supposed to be several weeks before it hits the council agenda, but we've yet to see Northwestern's user gift agreement. We don't know what kind of budget impact that has. We've yet to see North Shore Health users' gift impact or agreement. We've yet to see Evanston Soccer's user gift agreement. All of these things for Robert Crown, you know, they're going to have an impact. Citizens deserve to see them ahead of time. It's the holiday season, you're going to start losing more interest than we've already lost from the citizens, so we need to see those sooner than later, Erica. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Doreen?
Goodness gracious, an opportunity to give you two and three, parts two and three, to see if you want to read them. To lower, there's a, for submission number two that I gave you, I'm not reading the whole thing, just a part of it. It actually goes with what Clerk Reed was talking about, progressive taxation. This has to do with an alternative view about looking at narrowing the inequality gap. So, for those of you who are really interested in economics, this is an excellent article. They talk about to lower the inequality of distribution of financial assets. So, it's a little bit different take on things, and it's similar to UBI, but a little bit different, of course. And so, digital capitalism is increasingly divorcing employment and income from productivity growth and wealth creation, and the focus ought to be on fostering an ownership share of all of the wealth generated by the robots, which is futuristic, that are displacing global employment. And so, this article basically makes the argument that we need to support wealth that people have lost, I think, in terms of reparations. Consider that in our reparations movement, is that having a home, which is not talked about more or more than it should be, it should be talked about more, sorry, and that homeownership was the key to wealth and prosperity in the Fifth Ward. As usual, the Fifth Ward was very progressive and had insights that the rest of us lacked at the time. And then, number three, I can talk about real quick, and that has to be, Part Three, Public Comments, has to do with an article that's entitled, let's see, "Fixing America's Broken Disaster Housing Recovery System." Part One, Barriers to Complete and Equitable Recovery. That goes to climate change on the residential level, and I've not heard climate change adjusts some of the goals to reflect the fact that the community and residents actually need far more than it's been giving to them this year, and that with the way climate change has happened to me personally and others I know, if we take it accounting instead of, like, just gloss over the numbers and find out how many people were affected during the polar vortex, that would give us an idea of what we need to do moving forward. We have data already, again, saving money on costs of research, talk to the community. And then, I just want to read real quickly what I said about that. Please forward this, this number three, one, to those who might benefit from these ideas and viewpoints, equity in disaster prevention and remediation, recovery, and resiliency. That includes KUMR. To save homes and lives of Evanston's most vulnerable, trust me, when you have a home that's destroyed, you lose part of your life and acquire new challenges, personally.
Doreen, we hit our three minutes.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, please include an inexpensive pump and a generator to the 219 budget for this year's payment with the skinny fire truck approved for order just recently. That's the ultimate request right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. All right. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak at public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment concludes. We're now going to move into the special orders of business. We have one item for discussion this morning, and that is our fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget workshop. I'm going to turn it over to our city man, our interim city manager, to facilitate this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting off this morning, we're going to do a presentation on the capital budget for 2020. Laura Biggs is going to do that presentation.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Reed. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the bureau chief of capital planning and the city engineer. Today, I would like to just give you some highlights about our 2020 CIP program that we have proposed as part of the proposed budget. This breaks it out into different areas of spending that we have. Citywide CIP is set to, the proposal is set at $65 million. Last year, it was approximately $78 million. A big portion of this difference is really just the Crown project, and as we are starting to slow down in 2020, we are going to be wrapping up that project mid-year. Here's where the funding is generally coming for the capital improvement program. Don't want to spend too much time on this. These numbers bounce around a little bit. You'll see, like, there's a big difference in the water fund. That has to do specifically with the Lincolnwood connection, which will be reimbursed for, through the contract price that, as we sell water to Lincolnwood, and to somewhat large capital projects that are not going to be funded through low-interest loans, but will be funded directly from the water fund. And similarly, there are others, the TIF funds, as Fountain Square has rolled off, and some other projects that were TIF-funded. The only TIF funding that we have proposed is engineering on the Main Street Maple to Hinman project for this year. So, if you have any other questions about it, I'm happy to answer them, or you can, it's a lot to digest, you could certainly contact me later for answers. But getting into the meat of it, here are some of our major projects that we have going on. Street Water Main Street, we're, of course, going to do our annual resurfacing program that's funded by motor fuel tax. We'll be doing a substantial patching program. Those types of projects are always ongoing. The two major projects that we have going into construction in this category, the CIP, well, not into construction, are ongoing in this category, the CIP. Main Street Maple to Hinman, this is a streetscape improvement project. We have concluded, for the moment, our public meetings on this project. We're wrapping up the Phase One Design Report, which we're going to be submitting to the Illinois Department of Transportation. That will allow us to apply for funding through the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP. We are looking to do that next year, and we will be moving into design. If we do not get funding, the construction could occur in 2021. If we do get funding, and then IDOT becomes involved, that always lengthens things out, and the construction would be expected in 2022. Similarly, on projects that have been lengthened out by IDOT involvement, we have the Howard Street project. This is a project that we're partnering with the City of Chicago, and we've received Surface Transportation Program funding as well. This project is finished up in design. We are in the process of submitting the final plans for IDOT's review. It will be advertised next year. The water main work will be done in 2020, and then, as we move forward, the rest of the streetscape work will be done in 2021. Other transportation programs we have ongoing, the Central Street Bridge reconstruction was actually delayed due to the need for land acquisition, so that process is also ongoing right now. The construction is expected to begin in July 2020. However, there's been a long lead time on any product that's been built with steel for a variety of reasons, one tariffs and also limited supply. But just the large volume of construction that's been ongoing has also contributed to it. So, depending on what the lead time for the steel beams is looking like, we may choose not to shut down the Central Street Bridge until '21, because there's no point in reducing it to one lane in each direction if we don't have to, and incurring all of the construction stuff, so all the construction traffic control. So, we may not, we'll be awarding, well, IDOT will be awarding that project in '20, but we may not actually see the construction physically starting until '21. We received a grant proposal for the Ridge Avenue traffic signal study. This is really nice, the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant is purely based on the accidents, the number of accidents you are seeing on each intersection and the severity of the accidents. So, this project was looking at signal timing originally, but because of the grant, we were able to leverage that so that our money that we were going to spend just on signal timing will now provide the city's match, and we will also be able to implement any necessary changes through construction at seven intersections that are signalized from Davis down to Howard Street, Howard Street not being included. So, the work will basically begin this year in terms of doing the Phase One study. That project, the request for qualifications, is actually out to hire an engineer. Through next year, we'll be doing the Phase One Design Report, and we would expect to see construction occurring in '22 or '23, depending on IDOT's responsiveness to some of the schedule issues. We're also beginning a corridor study for safety on Oakton Street. That scope of work is being defined right now so that we can issue a request for proposal to get an engineer on board, and based on the improvements that are approved, we would expect that construction to occur in '21, '22 timeframe. Moving on to parks, we actually have a number of parks that are in process of being scoped out or all the way going into construction. So, Beck Park is a project where there's been a lot of discussion in the community, but the scope actually is not really well-defined yet. So, we're in the process, we had our first community meeting at the recent Fifth Ward meeting, and we'll probably have more community meetings to really define what the scope of that project looks like, to make an improvement at that new extension area that we received as part of an MWRD lease when the Shore School was demolished. And then, based on that, we will hire a consultant next year to help us with design. And moving forward, it's hard to know what this project is because we don't have the scope, so I haven't really designated any funding yet for it. Dog Park, similarly, this, actually, this one is being done in-house by city staff. We're just beginning to pull together some information on locations in the city that might be good candidates for dog parks based on what makes a good dog park as an industry standard, including things like parking and a minimum-size park and et cetera. So, we expect to be reporting out to that in the city council early next year. Harbor Park is actually out to bid for construction. We're receiving bids on Tuesday. This is a project that received an OSLAD grant, and so, we're able to leverage funding from the city and various other sources, such as Northwestern University, to make the city match for a larger grant that will allow us to rehab the basketball court and look at the playground, make some lighting and energy efficiency improvements, and install a picnic shelter. McCullough Park is one that we are in the process of, we've received proposals, and we're selecting a design consultant for this. It's a project that is currently one of our worst parks, and there are a number of safety issues that we really are looking forward to addressing on this, but we haven't really started the public engagement process yet to know entirely how that's going to play out.
Laura, we've got one question for your comment.
Just a quick question. Where's McCullough Park located?
McCullough Park is located in north Evanston, a few blocks west of Dyke Stadium, no, sorry, Ryan Stadium.
Yes, west of, it's between Green Bay and Ryan Field. It's right back there. It's in the Seventh Ward. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Brathwaite. I didn't know where the park was either. But my question is, just for the park selections, were these parks that were, received the lowest rating on our park scorecard, is that how they were selected for improvement?
Generally, yes. Larimer is an exception. That one has a lot of maintenance issues that were not reflected in the staff, in the park scorecard. And so, for that reason, staff is recommending improving it because of the large number of maintenance issues related to the equipment and the fields that are there.
Okay. At some point, can you, I don't have the scorecard in front of me, at some point, can you just give us, like, I know there were some, there were Fs and Ds and Cs or whatever on the scorecard. So, can you just kind of give us a small little chart or something to show us where that, maybe Fs and Ds, and then where these fall in there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you also just, I know there's been several concerns about water in Lovelace Park?
Yes.
And where that is, obviously, it's not up here, but what the thoughts are on that?
There is funding that we are suggesting to set aside based on your preliminary discussion of using good neighbor funds, and also setting aside a little bit of additional funding for, from the GO bonds to supplement that to deal with some drainage issues, but that is something that we wanted to more further discuss.
Alderman Sullivan?
So, are we going to fix it or not? We say, we set aside a little bit of money. Are we going to set aside enough money to actually fix the problem?
Right now, there's $200,000 total in the staff proposal, and that includes some good neighbor funds and some general obligation bonds. And we have received feedback from different people about whether that would go towards fixing the pathway or fixing the playground. When that is determined, we can fix part of the flooding issues in Lovelace, but we are not going to solve the entire park. That is a very large park, and it would probably be well over $1 million.
So, what's our general plan on these types of things? We do Band-Aids, or are we going to pick one park, fix all the problems, and move to another park?
When we work at the smaller neighborhood parks, we generally are fixing an entire park to the best of our ability. But there are some parks that are very large, and we consider them community parks, so that would be James Park in Lovelace and the lakefront. In those, we go after specific problems and just fix individual problems or individual locations.
So, like McCullough, for example, we would anticipate that after the $825,000 is spent, McCullough is taken care of?
It's done.
Okay. But some of the smaller ones, Beck Park, like, will there still be issues at Beck Park, you anticipate?
Beck Park is actually fairly large. Harbor, and we haven't defined the scope well. Harbor Park is a large park, although it is largely used as a neighborhood park. It borders the canal and has a bike path through it. It is unlikely that we're going to fix every problem in Harbor Park for $640,000.
Okay.
And that also is a flooding issue. I mean, every park that is located along the canal or west of the canal generally is a flooding, has a flooding issue, and also some other parks that are more generally located in northern Evanston, but not all parks. And so, if we were trying to fix every flooding issue in every park, we would not do anything else for years in the capital program. It's just a long-term problem.
So, like, the clay soil issue roughly is west of what, Ridge?
West of Ridge, we start having issues.
Okay, and that's generally, that creates flooding problems at a lot of these parks?
Yes.
Okay. My experience is that the residents are mostly frustrated about lack of drainage at the parks, because it's not just the rainy day, it's the next 10 days where the field parts are unusable. Do we have a plan to address drainage generally in these parks, an idea of what that would cost?
We do not. I understand residents' concern, and it is frustrating and not great that a lot of our parks cannot be used all the time, especially when we have a season like this spring where it rained pretty much almost every day. However, the city also has obligations for maintaining certain standards of safety, and a lot of times, these parks that are being selected have serious playground safety issues, or the playgrounds have deteriorated to the point they're not really very usable because we'll just start removing pieces or blocking them off. And so, that is also balanced with just going through fixing the drainage problem.
So, fixtures are more of a priority than the underlying land, generally, based on the concerns about liability? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there any... Is there any opportunity within any of these parks, including Lovelace, to leverage the money that we're willing to set aside and then try to seek other money, like happened with Harvard? Or was that just lucky or, you know?
That was very lucky. So the only grant program really that we're aware of that's regular, and it's really just become regular in the last year or two, so regular is, we'll see, but is the OSLAD grant program that is open space land acquisition and development. That is issued by, those call for projects are issued once a year by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources over the summer. And this year, so two years ago, last year, last year, we applied for Harvard and received a grant. This year, we applied for some improvements at James Park, and we have yet to hear what's going on with that. That's usually where we find out in January, February. That would certainly be very fortunate if we were to receive the grant two years in a row out of the entire state that's competing for it. And then we have, we haven't made a decision yet about what we would apply for next year. We haven't seen if there's going to be a call for grants or a call for projects or not.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I have one more question. So regarding the flooding, particularly, like you said, along the canal bank, you might not know the answer, but what is the relationship or responsibility with MWRD? I mean, do they help with any of that, assuming that some of the flooding is a result of the proximity to the canal?
MWRD does not help us with that. From MWRD's point of view, the reason why they lease these out as green spaces for us is because they're really excited that the water gets trapped there and has lots of opportunity to percolate into the ground before it hits any hard infrastructure that carries it into the canal or into their sewer system. So they're not really opposed to us upgrading it, but they don't have a motivation to help us pay for removing the flooding.
Thank you.
Okay, go, go on, Laura.
Moving on to facilities, the ADA Transition Plan, so this is a project, the city has an ADA Transition Plan from 2012. It's legally required to be updated on a periodic basis from the American Disabilities Act. And so this is a very involved process that involved oodles of staff time the last time it was done. We just don't have the staff available to do this, and so we are proposing to hire a consultant to do this and help us with it. The Civic Center, we are, we are gathering the information needed to do the space planning study that's in process. And we propose that next year, we'll be coming back to you with information about what we have found out and potential choices, recommendations for things we could do.
So it's, yeah, are you saying that that's half a million for the space study?
No. No, 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 no. I'm sorry, let me clarify. The space plan is actually probably not very much money. It may very well be under $20,000 because the staff is doing a lot of data gathering to try to reduce the cost, and so you may not even see it when we award it. The, but based on that, we will probably want to do stuff. And in addition, there are some things still that we need to do just as a Band-Aid to keep the boiler system running. We need to retube the boilers and replace the burners, and so there will have to be some money set aside for doing just the necessary things to keep the boiler running. Regardless of what's chosen, even if the staff or the city council were to recommend moving out of the Civic Center, that is a process that doesn't happen in a day, so we need the boilers to continue working for a few years.
So in the meantime, you're, you're saying half a million dollars is being set aside in this budget for repairs to this building that?
It's, it's not really repairs. It, the boilers themselves, I think that's probably around $100,000 worth of work. The, but depending on what is wanting to be done, so this isn't something that the staff is just going to go off and spend. This is just money that is set aside so that based on what city council recommendations to the staff are, the city, we have some flexibility to move forward, whether it is to hire somebody to start redoing the Civic Center and making the necessary improvements or it's to engage.
Got it. So this is an earmark per se, like, we had to spend a ton of money on these elevators? This is an earmark for anything?
No. I have no real knowing of what it's going to be. It's just money that's set aside so that we can do whatever is necessary to keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I think you peeled apart my question. It's a lot of money right now in our budget as a placeholder if there isn't anything specific. So I guess I would just obviously say be mindful of it, particularly because we are exploring other options for the building.
Yes. We would not spend, even fixing the boilers is going to be a large enough project that we'll be coming to city council to get permission to spend it. And we generally have more projects in the capital program than what we can sell bonds for. Because every year, there are some things that happen, whether it's just pure staffing limitations or IDOT takes a little longer to approve something than we expected or whatever. So we don't, I believe there's $10.9 million proposed in the budget and there's $10 million cap on the bond. So at some point, we just evaluate which projects did not move forward and then we rebudget them for the following year with new money. So if the money doesn't get spent, then it just won't be used, and we won't sell a bond for it. The other two big areas, so I, I want to qualify. There's actually small capital projects occurring lots of places, including Levy Center. I think every community center has some sort of work that's proposed for next year, but the two where we're spending, the two buildings where we're proposing to spend a more substantial amount of money when you look at a variety of things that need to be fixed, the Ecology Center and the Service Center. So the Ecology Center, for a while, we've had a problem with the water service freezing. It goes through a crawl space and there's an RPZ that's located in this crawl space. The crawl space is almost impossible to physically access because it's very tiny and has a poor entry into it. And the restrooms need to be rehabilitated and they have for quite a long time. And so we are just pulling a lot of projects together, and it just so happens, this has been on our books for a while, but it's one of those projects that has not gotten done, and so we just don't sell the bond and then we rebudget it. We also have an issue with the chimney. And the great room is settling. It turns out on inspection, it looks like under the floor was not framed properly for supporting the chimney, so we need to fix the framing and re-tuck point and fix the settlement problems that have been caused by settlement, by the chimney sinking. The Service Center is just, this is a building built in 1990, no, 1980, so it's about 40 years old. And there's money that's periodically put into it, but there's just, it's a huge building and there's, it's actually four buildings put together, and there's a lot of issues. So among the things that need to be done, we desperately need to resurface the yard. Again, we've been talking about doing this for a long time. It's actually not safe for people to navigate it, particularly in the winter, and because all of our vehicles pull out of the Service Center for snow removal, either there or the water utility, often people are there when salt hasn't been put down and the plowing hasn't all the way been done yet, so it's really important to try to address this issue. It creates a lot of wear and tear on all of our vehicles when they're driving under, over such a poor surface and on our people as well. And then the HVAC is actually several HVAC systems, most of them very small, and they sort of all need a little bit of work to be improved, but they're different types of systems. And then tuck pointing, which is also sort of, it's just a large building, and I don't think we're going to propose to tuck point all of it. We would need a lot more money for that, but there is a section that's pretty bad that we, is causing a lot of leaking into the staff offices.
Is the Service Center part of our overall space planning review?
It is not currently, and part of the reason for that is a Service Center is not just simply office space, it's really specific building spaces. Fleet Management, we have a lot of large service bays that just store several garbage trucks. That's where the garbage trucks park. They have to be parked inside because of the type of engine that they have. And, you know, just a lot of big open spaces that deal with very specialized equipment. So that is basically, you just, if you want to replace the Service Center, you just need to build a new Service Center, but it's going to have approximately the same functionality.
But here, we're going to put like 1.875 million between 2020 and 2021.
That is the staff proposal primarily because we pushed off doing things. Tuck pointing was in the budget two years ago and was one of the things that was cut because we didn't get to it, but there's at some point, because we get so much water into staff offices, we really just need to tuck point the building to solve that problem.
Has there ever been any consideration that perhaps there's another place around the city that might be better for the Service Center and that there's a better and higher use for that land right there against the tracks?
That is not something that we've evaluated, mostly due to the, the large amount of acreage that is required for that facility, and also that it's, it's not in, it's not in a highly desirable area of town that would have a market for something else.
Alderman Rainey?
I'm just wondering how many people on the council have ever been on a tour throughout the Service Center to see what, I mean, it's really complicated and I don't think, you know, like you say, where it is, is where it is and nobody cares. I mean, everybody's happy with where it is. I can just imagine uprooting that and moving it. And the expenditure of a million dollars or so is going to extend the life of that building to, to some extent. And it just, it just seems to me that to even consider moving that would just be not very right-headed. Just think of the problem we're having with storage, replacing our storage, and could we have an update on that at some point? I'm sure it's not in your capital budget, but at some point, maybe a memo to the council on our storage, given the sale of the recycling center.
Sure, we can do that.
But that's not a budget, I know.
I don't know. I mean, my, my point of, I look at that and say that's closer to 2 million than 1 million for the two, for the two years, and I don't know. It's hard for me to quickly dismiss and say, okay, yeah, it just makes sense to spend $2 million as opposed to actually doing some real thought and some analysis into it, and then coming back and saying, yeah, that made a lot of sense to put the close to $2 million into it. That's sort of where I fall. But again, we don't have to decide that now, I just wanted to share that point of view.
Sure. We could certainly look at it.
Moving on to our water treatment plant and our water storage areas, actually, most of the work is at the water treatment plant this year in terms of the water facilities. The 3642 intake, which is undersized and relatively non-functional at this point, we just don't get a lot of water through it. We, in, to provide context, I will just say we have three intakes, and the other intakes are much larger than this. They're 48 and 54 inches in diameter. And the intake that is 36 inches halfway out and 42 inches, the rest of the way out, they each go out about a mile total, all three of the intakes. That intake has, we've struggled to get any appreciable volume of water through it for the last 10 years, and we have done improvements to our other intakes to try to reduce icing issues that go on, and that has largely been effective, but we still are sort of always cognizant that if you have a problem with an intake in October or November, you are not fixing it until the following summer because there is just no way to do construction in the lake between December and April. So for that reason, we always strive to really make sure that we have enough reliability related to the intakes. To that point, we are looking at replacing the 3642 intake. If we were to do that project, it would be funded by a low-interest loan from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. We are in the process of completing the study of like what size and what would that intake look like, what would the orientation be? And the earliest that construction would probably could occur is 22 or 23. It involves, it's a pretty big coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. It's endless number of permits we will have to obtain to go a mile out into the lake. So that one, we are looking at now, but it is a very expensive proposition to put in a new intake. The, speaking of intakes, however, the 54-inch intake, we installed a heating system on it in 2010. And what that does is our, one of our biggest issues with intakes, and it's true all along the shore of Lake Michigan, is that during certain weather conditions in the winter, they freeze over with ice. And we had a situation where it froze over and we almost were not able to meet our water obligations, caused a little bit of a panic, and so we started investing in a heating system technology. Other water utilities have this issue, but generally, for a variety of reasons, they have a lot more storage versus the amount of water that they supply. And so they have been better able to navigate it, like if the intakes freeze over for two days, they're like, okay, where we have less ability to do that. We did a cost analysis to kind of compare it, should we build more storage? And that is prohibitively expensive. As you can see, we're just replacing one water tank that's 5 million gallons in the exact same location, and the construction contract for that was $19.6 million. So the way that we do a heating system, it goes out on the end of the intake and it keeps the ice from sticking. So sometimes we still get slushy water into the, the water plant. We know other intakes and other utilities are freezing over, but we are still able to get water into the plant and treat the water because the ice doesn't stick and form a snow cone ball on the end of our intake. However, it requires us to run an electric cable a mile out into the lake. Both of the existing intakes, the cable is located inside the intake, and we have heating systems on both the 48 and 54-inch. But on the 54-inch, that cable's become damaged, so it underpowers, it doesn't provide enough energy to, to get the full capacity of the heating system. To replace that cable is $1 million. So we are proposing to replace that cable, but that is a big cost for that cable. It is a drop in the bucket compared to building more storage. So we propose to do that. The heating system itself seems to be in, in good condition. After nine years, it still seems to be functional, except for the fact that the cable has gotten damaged.
When you had that close call, was that like the polar vortex a couple of years ago or the lake iced up way out?
It is not a polar vortex problem. What happens is when the wind, it's what seems to happen. Of course, we are not 30 feet down a mile out in the lake to actually see it occur, but when the wind comes from the west, so it is going overland and it's cold out, and there, when it hits the lake, it sucks a lot of energy out of the water because the wind is so much colder than the water. And when that happens, you can just get freezing right along the bottom of the lake. It would like super cool the water at the bottom, and then we get frazzle ice. These are like little splinters of ice. They don't, it's not a solid sheet of ice, but when you're sucking the water into an intake, these splinters come together and they form a solid mat, and then it starts building up. So the best way to deal with it is to not bring water into the intake, because when the sun rises, that's usually enough energy to melt the ice. It, it's just, it's a very, very narrow band that it's operating in. But we have seen that the heating systems do prevent us from having the problem when other utilities are seeing freezing happening on their intakes. But when the sun comes up, the ice starts melting and, and everything goes back to normal for everybody. Unfortunately, we had a problem around 2009, 10 timeframe when the sun came up and it did not go back to normal, and then we just started. The, the stored water levels just dropped down. It didn't really unfreeze until around 1:00 PM. At that point, we only had an hour or two of storage left.
Thank you.
We're also doing a modernization project at our laboratory. This is a few million dollars over a couple of years. The laboratory is just been around for a long time, and we do quite a lot of testing of our in-house of our water that's required by the Environmental Protection Agency. And so this is just to upgrade it to a more modern standard. We have a lot of issues with, like, the outside corner gets really cold in the winter and really hot in the summer, and you're supposed to be maintaining a constant temperature and just various problems. And we also don't have really good microbiology facilities. We've been sort of just making do for a lot of years. And then the treated water storage continues through next year, and it will be complete approximately February of '22.
So Laura, just on all that utility stuff, the city set up to have an enterprise fund for, for water, and that enterprise fund is generating the revenue to cover these capital projects, correct?
Yes. We do incur some debt, but the revenue fund covers, which is?
Pays the debt service on those.
Pays the debt service. So it does not impact your property tax. It comes off of essentially the cash flow of the water bills that we collect. So our biggest challenges right now in doing our budgeting is that we've been playing catch-up with parks and facilities. Those were under-invested in for quite a while, and we are working, we've actually made substantial progress and have dealt with a lot of life safety issues in our facilities over the last four years. So there's been a tremendous amount of progress in the work we have done to make our facilities safe, but we also want to make sure we can keep the doors open. And so that's where we see a lot of HVAC projects occurring right now. If we continue, especially for parks and facilities, to rely entirely pretty much on debt funding to fund them, that really limits what we can do, and so it's hard to ever really catch up on where we need to be for our parks and facilities. The life of a park is about 25 years, and our current funding rate, we're more on a 75-year replacement cycle. And so you can see, we're just not really, things will just continue to deteriorate over time in the parks. And then an interesting problem is that we just have three projects that really are not well scoped right now, that have the capacity to be large dollar-value projects that would be outside our normal debt limit that we issue. And as we make decisions, we'll be bringing you a lot of information in the next 12 months, and then we'll need to really consider funding sources as we move forward with what do we want to do on these three topics. Oh, and questions. So this is just a picture of the treated water storage that's currently under construction. But I'm happy to entertain any further questions that you might have.
Any questions for Laura that we haven't asked, or comments on this? All right. Thank you, Laura. Yeah, we're not, we're not really...
Where is this presentation? Because it wasn't in the packet.
Okay. So Laura, can you let people know where the presentation is, where they can find it?
Actually, Kate has put it in online now. I asked for it as well.
Why wasn't it in the packet, so we could see it before the presentation?
All right. So it's going, so it's going, it's going up, and just so everybody knows tonight, or today, again, it's a conversation about it, the capital budget, the general fund budget, all of that's not going to be approved until in November, so we're going to have plenty of chance to come back and talk about these and have public comment at that point on it. Ray?
I want to have a discussion. I want to be able to ask Laura a question and say, well, is the money that, in that, like the water?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that coming from bonds? Is that money already there?
Yep.
For the parks?
Right.
If the money that's given to, you know, like a 50-50 program?
Right.
Is, how much money is...
Got it. So for, yep, okay. So just for folks that are home and everything else. So the question was, where is the revenue, okay, to pay for the, pay for these capital projects? And Laura, at the end, sort of wrapped it up, but to put it in simple terms for people, everybody gets this. In the city of Evanston, we have not historically, and this isn't a good practice, okay, so let's be clear about that, have generated enough money from the general fund budget to put towards capital. So what that means in Evanston is that we have historically borrowed about $10 million a year in bonds, okay, to pay for these capital projects. So the ones that you saw there about, you know, parks and rec and the facility and the service center and all of those, those are paid through the proceeds of these bonds that we issue every year. It's why I did raise that question or ask. I knew the answer to the question that I asked, but I wanted it to be clear that on the utility projects and those water projects, that money is properly sort of generated, right, through the rates that we as residents pay and that the neighboring communities that pay us, that's all built into that.
Same question for the TIF. The TIF money, for the most part, is bonded out. So is the, the dis-TIF rates ever in the surplus, so that they have the money to actually invest in the park?
Yes. So the idea of TIF is that, yes, the property values will increase because we've invested in that area, and then that excess money, okay, over the incremental amount where the tax revenue used to be, is invested back into that area. And so we have many examples here in Evanston. Most of our TIFs have all worked effectively the way they're supposed to work, where we've invested back into that area. And then when the 23-year period expires, then that revenue goes right back into sort of the general operating budget of the city.
But are you saying that the general indebtedness of the city is gradually going up year by year?
It's, that's a great question. So the question was, is the city's general indebtedness going up, you know, year over year because of the 10 million that I talked about? So it's not. So just on that piece, it's not. When we do special projects, like the Robert Crown Community Center, okay, and other things, then that is adding to the overall debt to the city. But, and correct me, we've got our CFO here if I'm misstating anything, but on the annual $10 million, basically, we are paying that off as well every year through the debt service.
The debt service just went up by 2.3 million, wasn't it?
Yeah. So we'll, Hitesh, come on up. I'm okay with this quick conversation.
Good morning, Mayor, city members of the city council. Yes, so you're right, absolutely, Mayor. We are right around, in terms of the debt, the bonds, around 190 million as of this December 31st, '19. Now...
And just to, just so everybody understands, because some people have gotten up and said, you know, they use the number, 400 million, 400 something million.
Right.
Because the 190 that you're referring to, Hitesh, is, you know, infrastructure-related debt that the city has.
Right.
You're not factoring in there the pension debt.
Right. Yeah, 400 million or something. Yeah, that includes the police pension, fire pension. Those are the two big numbers, you know, close to around $200 million. And yes, we do pay roughly like $9 to $10 million back, you know, the way we structure. So we try to most likely structure it in a level play, so that debt service is not up and down, you know, drastically, because otherwise that would affect the tax levy every year.
Yep.
So even in 2019, I think we are paying close to around $10 million principal back, so that our debt would go down. And again, I think 10, 15 years, around 2007, '08, we were around 194 million outstanding debt. And then it has gone down. We are at 190, mainly because of the last two years ground bonds.
Yes.
Otherwise, we were like, for many years, around 150 to 165 million dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Hitesh. That's helpful. Let me go to Alderman Ray.
I think we should note also for the public, and we've said this over and over, but some need to be reminded, that in many cases, water, major water and sewer projects, and I'm talking about in the tens of millions of dollars, we apply to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for very, very low-interest loans. And we don't do those projects unless we're approved for those loans. And they're paid off over like 20 years, I think the sewer project was. And it was like $220 million, I think it was, to change out our sewers. And now we're working on some water projects, are we not?
Yes, that's correct. So there were approximately $220 million borrowed for the long-range sewer program, which finished in 2010. And so part of the reason why we see that we have periodic changes where the water rate goes up, but the sewer rate goes down an equivalent amount, so that we have revenue neutral, or neutral to the residents of Evanston, rate changes is because we've been retiring that debt. The debt was incurred, incurred over 20 years ago. And that has allowed us to, as just costs of living go up and everything, to be able to maintain our system.
But that was all very internal. It didn't go on our debt service in terms of a bond.
No, it's different.
Yes.
And for the treated water storage, we borrowed approximately 20 to 22 million dollars for that project. But that is an asset, that reservoir is an asset that is used by our wholesale water customers because it's critical to the treatment and storage of water. So the water that they are also getting, over the rates that they pay over time, they will pay over 90% of the cost of that project. And the residents of Evanston will pay less than 10% of the cost of that project.
That's great. Good, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Actually, I was gonna, can we go back a couple of slides on here? I just, these slides, I realized that also they went online. That one is, maybe one back again, Kate, or two back. I'm just trying to explain this right, well, anyway. If you look right there, that's good, because I have people at home who will watch this and call me the same thing. So where it says funding and it's GO bonds, that means we're bonding for it.
Yes.
Just for the public to understand when they read this chart or if they read this chart at home. But Hitesh, one thing that might be helpful, maybe in part of our budget documents, is if we can just have one document on the GO bond. So where we are now, like maybe a year review for the last couple of years, where we have bonded, what we have paid down, what our level is, you know, kind of what goes all into the $400 million. I think that one sheet might be helpful. Maybe we want to just continue that as we do our budget updates throughout next year, so people understand. I mean, we don't, we sit up here and we approve bonds, but we don't sit here and approve when we're paying off bonds. So people hear us talk about, well, people probably don't hear that, but people hear us talk about approving bonds, but they maybe are not calculating when we're paying down things. So that might be something that's just good for us to have on the website.
We can definitely do that. And again, it is readily available, and it is required as a disclosure in our audit report. So it's...
Yeah, but how many, how many people are reading the audit report? I mean...
But this is like one page. And again, we are ready to put it in a simplified way, but just again, like somebody wants to see right now, it is like a full, which would say the total bond outstanding, IEP loan, pensioned at the beginning, how much we retired, how much we added, and what is the ending balance. So it's like a summary of one page of all...
Right. No, I think you do a great job. I've seen it, but I just, because, you know, people don't maybe know where to look and all that. It might be helpful just to have a little quick one page.
Alderman Ray.
Yes. And Hitesh, I think also, it would be very helpful for people to understand the refunding of bonds and how that affects our bottom line.
Correct, absolutely. And again, one of the things which I think we discussed with all the aldermen, that we have a bond, debt service levy going up by 1.6 million. The Robert Crown portion of that is only 600,000. The other is a million dollars from one of the bonds we refinanced last year. Now, what happened, that refinance last year generated a million dollar in savings. I mean, we could have taken it over three years, four years. Instead of that, you know, we needed the money last year, so we took the entire million-dollar savings in one year. So now what happens is that we get to the normal debt service level, starting this year, in 2020, we needed that extra million for just one bond series. But yeah, we generated a million dollars in savings from refinancing. And you're right, Alderman Ray, in the past, every year, we have a, like a refinancing because generally the bonds are callable after 10 years, and we have issued the bonds in the past, so every year. With the exception of this year, we did not issue bonds in 2009, so there was no callable bonds this year. We will have again next year, and we have generated substantial savings.
So Hitesh, just to be clear then, the additional debt service that we're having to address this year is 1.6 million dollars?
Correct.
Okay. So some folks have come up, I know Ray did, I think, and were saying, using a number of, was it 2.4, Ray, or something like that? 2.3? Do you know, okay, anything?
I'd rather the packet, in the packet for the bond, than making it all up, the debt service would go up by 100%.
Okay, okay. So we'll, do you know what?
There are two different things. There could be, I mean, just trying to, debt service levy versus debt service amount, two different things.
Did he explain the difference?
Right. So the total debt service is the actual payments we owe to the bondholders. Debt service levy is the, what we decide staff recommend to the council, and what council decides to put it on the property tax, which is kind of becomes the burden on the residents to pay the tax on it. But so this year, debt service tax levy is going up by 1.6 million. Out of that, 600,000 is the Robert Crown portion, and the other million dollars, as I explained earlier, is from the, one of the bond series, which we refinanced last year, took the entire million-dollar savings, used it last year, and that's why we have that million-dollar increase this year.
So what is the, what is the payment for debt service for this year, and what would be the payment for debt service next year?
I mean, I don't know exactly. And again, you could be right, that we have a debt service of 2.3 million more next year versus this year. But it's not going to be a burden on the residents. Residents will only see an increase of 1.6 million dollars.
Okay, okay. So again, we're going to continue to have conversations about this. I just wanted to start this off and sort of address this, try to have a little more dialogue there and everything. So thank you, Hitesh. I know we'll see you again. Okay, we're going to now move on to the next portion of this special order of business. So a city manager, in terms of city manager, if you want to take us through the budget balancing worksheet?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to jump over to the budget balancing worksheet. I know that a couple of members of the council had to leave for a funeral, but we still have five members present, so hopefully we can continue to have a solid discussion on the, on the budget. We've got many of these items we talked about during the budget presentation on, earlier this, earlier this month, so they're not anything that we haven't talked about before, but there's a lot of things that we've covered that people have raised concerns about. So I just want to, if at all possible, get some more information or detail on which things the council might be leaning towards changing, and which other things might we want to take another look at as we get closer, so that we can have a more fruitful discussion at our upcoming budget meeting. So... This is in the proposed budget. So this is, was in the packet for when we did the budget presentation a couple of weeks ago, and then also in the general proposed budget that was released on October 6th. So as you are aware, we've talked about moving all of the Health and Human Services, services into the Social Services Fund, giving it the dedicated revenue source from the property tax fund. Community Development is proposing the amusement tax increase. This largely falls to things like the movie theater. It's not part of any kind of Northwestern-related amusement at this point in time. Self-storage tax, we've talked a little bit about. Plan review, permitting software, this is a big thing for us. We've got a lot of people who come into the office that could do this online, and getting electronic plan review up and running would really make it a lot easier for residents and contractors to do a lot of this stuff from home 24/7 versus having to come into the office. So anything people want to chat about with self-storage amusement tax or social services?
Got a couple lights here. Alderman Saffron, and then Alderman Ray.
Erica, SCOKI has a 5% tax on self-storage units. The speaker before said they did not. I talked to him. I think he's incorrect. We know that, that they have a 5% tax on storage units.
That's correct. SCOKI did implement a tax on storage units. It was supposed to go into effect in October, but they moved it to November, so the first month they'll be collecting would be November, so they'll receive that in December.
Okay. So we don't have any concerns about constitutionality or any of the other things that he brought up?
No.
Okay. And then, do you know what SCOKI's amusement tax is? I'm trying to find it, and I got 2%, and I don't know if that's current. And the reason I'm asking is because if people are looking to go to movies, their three choices are generally Village Crossing, Old Orchard, and Downtown. So if we're not competitive, and then you throw in some of the other inconveniences of Downtown versus a shopping center, I worry that we're not going to generate any, the revenue that we're anticipating. So if we could figure out...
We can look into what SCOKI is charging for their amusement tax. I don't have that figure off the top of my head, but if our staff is able to get it during this meeting, we'll...
It would just be helpful to figure out what we might actually realize. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ray?
Could you, I don't have my thing open here. What, the revenue, the tax on storage facilities would be on the rent one pays for the, is that how it would work?
That's correct. So if you pay $100 a month in rent for your storage facility, you would be charged 5%. It would be $5. It would be $105 a month.
I just wanted to make a comment also about some of the citizen comment about big, maybe the city clerk, big-box taxes. One of the things, you know, most of our stores have been maintained despite Target and, you know, Home Depot, et cetera. But these stores offer great advantages to people of very modest incomes, and also they're huge employers. And I would, I would really, I would oppose any efforts to impose any additional taxes on them, because I would find that being really and truly regressive. Is this the time to ask questions on other things that aren't in the budget memos?
Absolutely.
I'm wondering, I was looking back in some old budget material, and there was once a very... a very intense conversation among aldermen about wholesale gas and natural gas. The wholesale gas people were buying in bulk. Do you know of any difference in the way we tax the two? Or does anybody, do you remember that, Alderman Rainey?
They
Yeah. There was a, there was a different taxation, and I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that not-for-profits, et cetera, are paying the same rate that everybody else is paying. Major corporations, for-profit and nonprofits are all paying the same rates for utility taxes.
Okay. Yes, we can look into that.
I tried to find something.
Yeah. I was looking at Dave, and he was shaking his head as to not know. So we're going to have to gather more information about that.
Okay.
But we can put that in budget memo.
Also, I don't know, I started counting up the number of health clubs in the city of Evanston. And I can't really justify why we can tax movies and not tax health club memberships. And I'd like to get a memo on that.
Sure. I did send you some information. Right now, the city of Chicago taxes athletic charges a tax on, when you take an athletic class. So if you take one class, you get taxed on the class. But you don't get taxed on your membership by month. There's a lot of taxes that were precluded from applying that other states allow. So for instance, Iowa, Wisconsin, there's about 100 services they, they allow to be taxed that Illinois does not. We have a far more limited amount of things that we are allowed to tax. And if we wanted to entertain taxing additional items, we'd have to get some help from Springfield.
I'm wondering, is that excluded? Do you know for a fact?
I do not know for a fact, but based on what we've seen in Chicago, I think it's limited to the classes and not to the monthly memberships. But we'll get a budget memo out about that as well.
And what does this self-storage tax generate? I'm not
We've got it budgeted at $50,000.
Are we in a position this morning to make motions? Is this an official meeting?
Because we lost a couple aldermen. I'm told we need to have six to
So in order to take any action, you have to have a full quorum, and you only have a majority of quorum. So we're meeting open meetings, but you can only discuss right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is the revenue that we're generating from Sunday parking meters?
Mike, do you have that number?
And I know, I know we're counting that in our budget, because I'm very interested. I just think we need to get rid of that, charging for Sunday parking. That's just, I don't like it. And I don't think anybody else likes it. And I think we ought, as a council, to consider eliminating that.
Yes, that's been a topic of discussion throughout the community. I think where we've, where we've sort of landed in this, in the, in the big scheme of things is that, you know, as of right now, unless we take action, January 1, citywide, the parking rates go to $2 an hour. And if you remember the discussion we had prior to the budget last year, the recommendation last year was to go from $1 to $2 an hour. That was considered to be what market rate was, and that was what staff was recommending be instituted citywide. As sort of a bridge measure, the decision was made to soften the blow a little and go to 150 in March earlier this year, and then $2 next year. That's still obviously something that we can change at this point in time, but the recommendation from staff is still to move forward with that.
I support $2 an hour, but not, nothing on Sunday.
If we wanted to eliminate Sundays, it would be staff's recommendation to at least retain that $2 an hour, if not across the city, in the downtown, because we would be, have to offset the loss of Sundays somehow.
I understand.
But we'll get you the number specific to Sundays for our next meeting.
Do you want to ask something just on this?
Yeah, I would like to have a follow-on question to Alderman Rainey's. I'd like to understand what, what the numbers are for the Sunday, and also understand what the numbers were, are for increasing the parking rate to $2 an hour. I know that Alderman Revel raised this issue that the downtown shopping area has the ability for someone to go into a parking garage and have the one hour free. But in the other commercial districts, for instance, Central Street and Main Dempster Mile, that doesn't exist. And the concern is that the $2 an hour rate, I mean, I certainly have heard a lot about the 150 an hour increase. I'd like to understand what the increase, the additional 50 cents an hour revenue is. I know we got a memo regarding this, and I have to say, I did not fully understand it. So I would like to understand those two numbers, the increase of 50 cents an hour throughout the whole system, and what the Sunday numbers are.
Okay, yeah. And looking at the budget memo, I believe that they just compared the same time period last year to this year as, in terms of what we know for sure. So we can, we can budget what we might expect to get, because we have, the increase hasn't been in effect for the entire year. But the budget memo took, I believe, March through September, which is what we have hard numbers for. And I think that they said, if we were to take that same period of time next year with the 50 cent increase, it would be about a $1.3 million increase. So taking that, you know, five-month period, times, you know, the whole 12 months of the year, you know, it's close to $3 million.
Okay.
I also got an update from Kate. We budgeted Sundays at $260,000 for the year. So if
That was my memory, too.
If we did go away with Sunday enforcement, we could expect to see a decrease in the revenue for parking of $260,000 a year, and maybe some nominal drop in ticketing enforcement. So that would be general fund. We'd have to look at how to cover that as well.
So that was the budget for 2019. Was the actual pretty close to that budget? Or we don't know?
No, that was the actuals.
That was the actual. Okay. All right. Okay. Alderman Fleming?
Just so I can confirm, we can ask anything now. We're not just sticking to this worksheet.
Flores, you
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. So I would like to look more into the vacant property tax. I looked at the memo, and I looked at a couple of links in the memo. So my, my rationale, so I know we have a lot of commercial spaces downtown that are empty, and from what, you know, kind of my nonofficial conversations have been, is that people say that their rents are very expensive, and obviously, we don't control the rent prices. I know that commercial owners are concerned about the property tax bills that are coming out. So we don't know what that's going to look like. But I would like to look at that to see if that can help us kind of encourage people to not leave their rent so high, maybe get some more business down there, or also particularly the residential, the properties that are vacant in the residential areas. We have, you know, a variety of them. We always talk about making more affordable housing, but land prices are very high. So I would be interested in looking at that, and maybe even looking at how we could do that for people who have had the property vacant for over 10 years, or, you know, over five years, or something like that, to try to encourage them to either sell those properties or look at how we can develop those properties, particularly for affordable housing. So if we could kind of dig more into what that would look like in terms of the numbers. And I believe that the county could probably help us with a list of vacant properties. I know the city would have a list of people who we currently have a vacant property fee for. My other question has to do a little more with the mental health board funding. So I know they sent us a letter about increasing those fundings to $1 million. I don't know that we have the money for that. But one question I do have, which is maybe not a budget, because I think this was approved, but Cradle to Career, I know, receives $50,000. I wasn't here to vote no for that. But I am concerned that they, as a nonprofit, receive this set aside $50,000, but the rest of our nonprofits have to go through the mental health board in a very public process of applying for funds and justifying the need for funds. So I don't know when that funding cycle is up, but I would be interested in putting that $50,000 into the mental health board and having Evanston Cradle to Career apply for funds like all of our other nonprofits. Let's see, let me just go on my list here. So there also was a budget memo, and this was something I brought up last year, in terms of staff car allowances. This has nothing to do with my thoughts on our staff, but as we've asked residents to pay more, as we cut back on services, and I know over the years, we've not been able to increase all of our staff salary, we now are at $50,000 for car allowances, which is a decrease from last year. And then the director of the library receives $47,000 in car allowances. I would, we can't make a motion, but I would strongly encourage us to look at no longer offering car allowances. We have a plethora of city cars here that people can use when they're at work and doing city business. I know that we have cars that some staff take home based on kind of the 24-hour nature of their jobs. You know, I do appreciate our staff, and I want them to work hard. I just don't see as a municipality why we think we need to provide car allowances, particularly one person who's receiving almost $50,000 compared to our whole city staff of 800, who are receiving $50,000 across the board. So if we got rid of those two, that would be $100,000. We could maybe plug that money into many other places we need it. So I would strongly encourage us to reduce those two car allowances. And let me see. Oh, and then my other thing had to do with, and I didn't ask for a memo, but if we could look at, again, the complete streets, this comes up, and the parking and transportation, sometimes it's now come up in the reparations conversation a bit. But we continue to have the 50/50 sidewalk policy, which I do not care for. And I think we need to really look at, as we're charging people for these different services, how we can alleviate some of that and provide them with a functional sidewalk when we provide them with a functional street. So those are the three things right off the top of my head that I'd like us to look further to for this budget.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Alderman. In terms city manager, I was just curious, on the car allowance, that Alderman Fleming just ran the 50,000 total, and then 47,000 for the library. I know we don't control, the library controls their budget, not the city council. But is that true, that the library director gets $47,000 a year for a car?
And that is a decrease from last year.
Forty-seven?
I just
It's in the contract. It's a decrease. I verified it. It's also in the memo. It is true.
I believe the library director is here, and she could speak to her car allowance. But what she's communicated to me is that her car allowance mirrors that of other staff. So if she wants to come out.
My other question, as we're on this topic, is if I could have some more information. So in the budget document, it also says the car allowances are just, they're discretionary. So some people get $37, some get $300. I am very concerned about almost anything we do this discretionary. So if we are going to keep the car allowance, I would like us to have a policy in terms of how we, or the department directors decide who gets a car allowance. Again, as we pull up, we see that we have a lot full of cars. And I'm just not sure why we need to give a car allowance if you can get here and use one of the city cars.
Okay. Thank you. I will add it to my list to look at the policy on how we do car allowances.
I'd like to, can I jump in here?
You can actually, we just finished up with Alderman Fleming. You were next, so you've got the floor if you want.
Well, it's a follow-up to Alderman Fleming's questions. I'd like to understand what other communities do. I think that obviously, we should have a policy, but a lot, if you look at the list of who has a car allowance, there, there, a number of those people are essential to the operation of the city, and that they're on a 24-hour call basis. So I think, I'd like to get more information about what's best practices for car allowances. And I know there was something in the memo about per diem, and we aren't that large a city, and how, you know, most other municipalities allow per diem, and that, how that would work out for our city employees. But I think that for so many of the demands that we have here for our city employees, the list of people who are on it, I think it is, it's very important. But I want to understand more about what other communities do.
Thank you.
Karen, you want to talk about your thing, but I thought our record's gate, right? It's like, it used to be $1,000. Now it's $400 a month. For Karen, you want to?
So, so let's do this, Hitesh. We'll have the city, the interim city manager gather this information and put it together for us all and stuff like that. Okay?
But it's not $47,000 a year?
It's definitely not.
Definitely not, even remotely close to that. So
I just redid my math. You're, you're right. So the budget memo does, I think, state 40,000. But I did redo my math, basically.
That's the total for
That's the total for the, for the staff library.
No, no. I think annual savings for everybody, everybody is like
So we'll have the interim city managers look into these numbers and get it back. So the council has, you know, all the, all the right numbers. That's what, that's what we're going to do. Okay. Alderman, when, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Or I'm going to go over to Alderman Rainey? Okay, Alderman Rainey?
I need to better understand what the vacant property tax is. How is that applied? Could somebody explain that to me?
And just, I had a couple of questions from some folks. Does that, did that memo get published out there?
Yeah.
And where can people find it?
But I don't, I don't understand.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, I believe that budget memo is part of the packet on the budget website.
It's on page 50.
I know, but I don't get it.
Good morning. Johanna Leonard, Community Development Director. At the October 14th meeting, Alderman Simmons brought up looking at vacant tax. Staff reviewed it based on, it's been generally quite a popular discussion in the various urban planning, urban policy periodicals. And a lot of communities are looking at it for, for a couple of reasons. One, some communities, particularly more international communities, I think London has, has looked at it, Melbourne has looked at it. There's been an influx of foreign investment in properties. People buy properties, let them sit vacant because they need to put their money somewhere. So particularly Melbourne and some neighborhoods in London had just lots of vacant units. So they're looking at how, how that could be addressed. Oakland and New York City have looked at it a little differently. New York City is looking at some of the vacant neighborhoods, vacant commercial spaces and neighborhoods. And Soho was provided as an example. People are waiting for, for large retailers. And certainly, over my years here, I have seen property owners say, I don't want a small mom and pop that's not necessarily having the credit or other things. I want a Starbucks. I want a, a large retailer that I, I know I can have a committed fund of, of money, even if they close. We've, the vacancy, I think the most notable one in my time has been, was at Oakden and Asbury. That had been an OSCO drug. And when the standalone OSCO drugs went away and were turned into CVSs, CVS had, fortunately, slash unfortunately, just built a new, brand-new CVS down the street at Howard and Asbury. So they, that property sat vacant, but it, but the, but the property owner was still receiving a very large check each month, because CVS was still, had that lease, and that lease just ended this year. So I, I arrived about 10 years ago, and that was, that was vacant at that time. So you can imagine that was a, a pretty long window of time. So that was one piece. And then the other piece was Oakland has addressed, looked to address some of the vacant properties. People bought properties in speculation. But they, when, if you parse through some of the things that they've gone through, vacant property means something to everybody, different people. So one of the examples was, what if you're on a double lot, and you, you use part of it for a backyard, or you just have it grassed, but it's, your property is a full double lot? Do we count that as vacant property? They haven't developed it. They're sitting on it, but they're enjoying it as a backyard or a side yard or a vegetable garden or something, or just grassed area? Is that, is that considered a vacant lot? Is vacant considered something that's not being used, and what is a use? So I think that one of the things that is a theme in the, in the documents is defining what problem you're trying to solve, and trying to define what the trigger is that is, is defining a vacancy or not, or non-occupancy.
Okay. But how is it applied? That's what I'm, I'm
So there's two, a couple of different ways. There's one, some, some places, and this depends on state law, it's applied on the property tax bill. So California will add one fee. Other places have a percentage of assessed value. And then other place, we have, we have a, you know, we have a vacant registration fee. That's another, a fee is another way that people have assigned it. We have, in Cook County, we have the ability for people to ask for a change in their assessment based on lack of cash flow, market analysis, cost analysis, and vacancy due to, to non-occupancy, which I tried to flesh out in some properties in the
And the number of properties that have been vacant, how, I mean, what would be the timeframe? What would be the, the point at which we would apply the tax?
I think that, that addresses what problem you're trying to solve. Because, so if somebody, the property I noted on, at 707 Church, that property has been vacant since Barnes &amp; Noble left. If you go up to that, I was, I was in that property several years ago. It still looks like Barnes &amp; Noble is up there. But if you, I mean, they don't, there's no books. It just, you can see the remnants of the space if they were the last occupant. But there has been a for rent sign there for as long as they have probably left. So based on our code, if you're trying to lease a property, actively sell it, that's not considered. We don't put that as an, as a vacant building. So that's, I think, the direction I would be seeking if, if, if it has been unoccupied for X period of time unsuccessfully. There's, there's documentation that other communities have, have required in order to demonstrate that you're, in order to be exempt from any tax or fee that you have you're, in order to be exempt from any tax or fee, that you have to provide those things.
Johanna, just for our city code, though, for the fee we charge for vacant properties, how long do they, I know there's a process between how long they have to be empty before we actually say that they're vacant.
So I am going to have property standards on January 1st, so I'm getting up to speed, so I would defer to Ike to help me out on the answer to that question.
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogbo, interim health and human services director. There are a number of codes that we have, I would say sections in the code that we have that addresses vacant properties. And one of it states, if it's unoccupied or unsecured, that qualifies it as a vacant property. If it's unoccupied for two years, it also qualifies it as a vacant property. If it's unoccupied and also has property maintenance violations in a period of 180 days, that also constitutes it as a vacation, as a, yeah, it also constitutes it as a property that is vacant. So there are a number of definitions when we are considering a vacant property, you know, unsecured, boarded, all those things.
Thank you.
We don't have hardly any of those, I mean, unsecured properties in this town.
We have quite a number of them, but the thing is, once we get that complaint, we go out and we war them up, you know, and we try as much as possible to monitor those properties.
Thank you. Okay, interim city manager, you want to continue to go through?
All right, so moving on to administrative services, not too much to discuss here, other than my big, big thing I want to do is, next year, really do some deep dive on long-term financial forecasting. I think that we could do a better job of that, and so I want to set aside some money to help us do that. I think that there's bigger decisions that we need to make over the course of the next few years in order to put us in a better financial position. And without knowing what our revenues and expenses look like over the long term, we're not going to be able to make good decisions around our budget. We also are proposing to do some standardization around some parking fines. This is not meant to be a revenue generator. This is meant to align some of the fines and fees that haven't been touched in a while with others that have, and then make it so that some of the, like occurrences are similar in nature. And so this is a phased approach where the biggest increase is $5, so only capping any increase for next year at $5, but then codifying the increases over two to three years to get them where they need to be. So there's a budget memo in the packet about that. Moving on to the police department. Last year, if you recall, we held four police officer positions vacant. This year, we're proposing to hold three. We have a commander that's retiring in November. That position was, is one that was recommended by the Hiller &amp; Heinz study to be potentially eliminated, so we're proposing to hold that vacant and have it filled with the executive officer, which is a position right now that doesn't supervise anybody. And the chief's made a number of recommendations about how he wants to operate the police department, which I think are really, really smart, and so I am supportive of what he's trying to achieve with his budget. He also wants to increase the police overtime, which is a big thing for us, because over the last five years, I don't think it's been properly budgeted, and it's gone over every year by the tune of an average of $500,000. So the $500,000 that we're proposing is basically just the average of what they spent over the last five years. So they'll be in a much better position to actually hold to their budget next year if they're given the proper amount of money to allocate towards the overtime that they've actually incurred in real time for the last five years. So we also have a bunch of reimbursements that are coming in. So Northwestern started paying us for all of our work, the football games and things like that, so those reimbursements are coming in a lot higher. We're expecting to see an additional $400,000 in revenue for that next year, which is great. So that sort of offsets the increase to the overtime. And then we have some reserve, healthy reserve in the 911 fund, so we're proposing to move two telecommunications from the general fund into the 911 fund, which makes a lot of sense. Any questions on police department? Okay, moving on to fire. Fire department, if you recall, we held four firefighter positions vacant last year. This year, we're proposing to fill two of those positions and go down to two. And talking with the chief, I think it's important for us to get to full staffing in two years. That's the goal. We've committed to doing two this year and potentially two next year to get us to full staffing by the beginning of 2022, 2020, is that right? Two years from now. The vacancies in the fire department have started to create a lot of burnout, I would say, or some more injuries and things like that. It's done what it's needed to do for the last few years to help, but I really think it's prudent for us to move forward with filling those overtime. And then they have a model where they think they can recover more of their costs for their incidents. This is not anything with ambulance. This is more when they respond to any kind of scene where they would be recovering damages from an insurance company outside of ambulance runs, so they think they can get about $75,000 more from that. Parks and Rec, as you know, state law is requiring us to increase the state minimum wage, so we're going to incur a pretty, pretty healthy increase in personnel costs related to the large amount of people who are in that category in parks and rec. So we've got the proper amount budgeted for that for next year. Moving on to public works, it's time for our triannual elm tree inoculation. So we've got money set aside from the last two years that we will expend, and then we will do our elm tree inoculation in 2020. And then, of course, everybody knows the gas tax was doubled July 1, so the city is receiving significant more amount of money from that source, and we've got eligible expenses that are tied to it that will be moving into the motorfield tax fund, so that will be savings to the general fund overall. And then the last thing is citywide changes. As you know, it's the second of the three years that the city council committed to increasing the fund balance in the general fund, so we're proposing to move 1.5 million into that. It's been a few years, I would say since 2016, that any exempt employees have received any kind of merit increase. So we've got some issues where employees who are union employees have received increases, and now they're at, or even potentially in some cases above, what their supervisors are making. So we're putting aside a little bit of money to give exempt employees merit increase and adjust some of the positions for compression. And then one thing we haven't talked about yet is what rate we want to apply to the cannabis tax. The city can apply up to 3%. So if anybody has any feedback on where they're going to fall on the cannabis tax, we're going to bring that to the city council in November for discussion. So thoughts on cannabis tax?
I don't, yeah, I don't have a thought right now on cannabis, but I just wanted to ask a question. So our fund balance, so we have a goal or objective as a city council to have, I think, is it 16% of the general fund that's in a fund balance? Where are we right now in terms of what percent that is, and as well as dollar value, and what the 16% would be dollar value as well?
I mean, as a part of the budget policies, the city council adopted, I think, a few years to have a 16.6, so which is roughly two months of operating expense. As for the last audit report, 2018, we are hovering around 12%. So we need, yeah, like this one and a half million, this is the first year, then 2020, and one more year, then we would, can get to that 16.6.
All right, thank you. All right, other questions, comments, thoughts? Fugree, you want to add something?
Yes. So I will be putting forward a proposal. Last year, the clerk's office requested a budget increase of $40,000, and the proposal was that we would take over vital records and provide that service. As well as providing vital records from the clerk's office, we would be able to give free birth certificates to folks participating in the mayor's summer youth program, as well as other vulnerable groups who need identification, such as a birth certificate. I guess I'm wondering, I know that vital records still aren't offered here in the city. Is there an update on that, and is it?
Sure. As it stands right now, we do not have authorization from the state to provide that at the civic center at this time, so it is still being provided out of the county office on Gulf Road. So that is where we are at currently.
And from the numbers that were reported last year, and from our estimates, the revenue generated by vital records could be about $140,000 annually. That's what the numbers were last year, I suppose.
I don't think that was the net number. I know there's an offsetting expense for the personnel.
Yeah, there's the cost of, you're right. Which if the clerk's office absorbed it, there wouldn't be that additional personnel cost?
Yes, I don't know off the top of my head, but I could look into it.
Okay.
Great, thank you, clerk. Okay, seeing no more comments, lights. Here's one, last minute.
Sorry, one last minute. I did want to apologize, I had my numbers wrong. Sorry, my handwriting's not great. So I try to always be very accurate, so I want to apologize that I was so firm, and then I was not accurate. So yes, the library director is $4,800 last year. Hey, people make mistakes. That was a decrease from last year. That was a decrease from last year, but I still do advocate that we should not have car allowances. People can submit for their reimbursement from mileage or use a city car. And we still would be around $51,000 savings.
All right, thank you, Alderman. And there's a lot of numbers here, we all get a bogey. All right, seeing no more lights? I'm sorry. Sure, Mary, ask a quick, come on, yeah, come on.
Thanks. This regards, Erica, you mentioned something about Northwestern generate, or something about revenue for overtime, but my question was, I know in 2017, Northwestern did not pay $80,000 of the overtime incurred for our officers working them, and then I know that, I think it was 2018 or 2019, the contract was changed, so they will cover all. So is that expenditure that Northwestern gave covers the time that our officers were working overtime for them? So it's not really a revenue, it's more like we incurred their charge because they were working for Northwestern, right? They didn't pay above what they were charged, right?
Correct. So as the policy prior to this current year was that Northwestern would reimburse us for police officers that worked outside of the stadium, outside on the grounds, but not inside of the stadium. And so this year, with the policy change, we are being reimbursed for all expenses related to our police officers working with Northwestern, specifically for football games and things like that. But there is no additional above and beyond.
Okay, and it's not just the two hours before, it's now, if it's four hours, they pay for four hours' worth of time?
Correct.
Okay, good. And then, do they reimburse us at all for our public works, people who put up all the signs and the barriers and all that other stuff, or extra garbage pickup? Is there any compensation for that?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Alderman, start.
It's along those lines. The budget memo on police overtime says, increasingly, community organizations are requesting a police presence at public events and reimbursing the city for overtime incurred. What other community organizations are requesting police overtime? Custer Street Fair, that type of stuff, or?
Yes, sir, we get the Custer Street Fair, we get school events.
Okay, when you say school events, like?
Events that the school have, we just had.
Like ETS, or?
Yes, yes, sir.
And do we mark it up at all, or do we just get reimbursed, like, for flat what it costs?
We don't get reimbursed.
Okay.
Like football games?
Yeah, football games, they pay the police officer straight.
Okay, well, it says here, increasingly, community organizations are requesting a police presence at public events and reimbursing the city for overtime incurred.
We are getting reimbursed for all special events that are going through the special event process, so in the application, if you're doing, you know, a 5K at the lakefront, or whatever your event is, and police presence is either requested or required as part of our policy, then the event, if the city is not cosponsoring the event, then the event operator is responsible for refund, reimbursing us those costs. So, for example, the Fountain Square, Downtown Evanston Art Festival is a reimbursed expense.
At 100% of what it costs the city, or?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's several others.
And then, like, if ETS has a football game or something like that, they just pay the officers directly, and the city's not involved?
The ones we get, NU, CTA Theater, federal government, we get 100% reimbursement.
Is there anything prohibiting us from marking up police services for these special events?
No, I mean, we take an administrative cost, or a fee, on all the crossing guards that we provide to District 202, so it's been done, but we have not put that into practice for anything else.
So is the city, the city's not made entirely whole by the reimbursement structure that we have right now? There's...
We're not covering our administrative costs, but we're covering the costs of the personnel.
Okay. Is there anything prohibiting us from increasing the reimbursement rate to cover our administrative costs?
No, if the council wanted to propose that, we could do something like 101% or some stipend administrative fee, flat fee, something like that.
Okay, if we could figure out what number that makes sense is, I would like to entertain that.
Okay, we'll put that in a budget memo.
Thank you.
Elliot?
Eric, you say that the amount of overtime that police are paying their staff is not being driven by these events, and that's what I'm hearing, that we're being, the city is being compensated when police, Evanston Police handle those events, they compensate the city for that, and that's not, that overtime, that $500,000 is not paying, it's not paying for that? Is that correct? Is that correct interpretation?
Yeah, some of that overtime is generated by a number of things, like sick, minimum staffing, you know, when we go below minimum staffing, we had to hire back, but what we have done to offset that, which has accumulated into about 100, a little bit over $100,000 savings this year, is we pull personnel from specialized units down to cover some of that overtime. So we're driving overtime down by being more efficient in how we distribute the personnel. Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. Okay.
Can I make another budget memo request? Sorry. I mean, you mentioned, when Mary Wazinski asked her question, that was one of interest that I have, so is that going to be a budget memo? Just to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Great. All right, I think this was a good discussion. I appreciate everybody coming out this evening, or this morning, this morning for it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, for coming out.